Okay, let's call this meeting back to order. Board Supervisors meeting back to order at this time. Ms. Laura Oster.
In front of y'all, y'all will see some notes here. I'm gonna explain to you a little bit about my process, how I started the budget. I send out typically the first of June, I send out to each department a copy of their budget, what they currently spent, what they have for the year. And give them about a month to turn back in basically their want or their wish list for the next year, or need list. When I get these in, I go ahead and put in the requests as they have submitted it. But I usually fill out the payroll portion only unless they have requested an additional personnel, additional monies for people, or whatever they have requested in above what I think the board is gonna do. And the reason I always put in all theirs is first to see how big of a deficit we end up in. What I typically do is I estimate what our revenue is going to be for the next year, and that's my beginning point. What we wanna do is we want to match our expenses to our revenue. We have a great cash balance, but you don't ever wanna use cash for reoccurring expenses. You only wanna use cash for one-time obligations. So I don't count that as a part of the operating budget. So we're gonna start looking here at each of these departments. I do a little note of explanation out to the side. It's not all encompassing, it just highlights maybe why the overage or under. I typically do the board supervisors' budget. I ask y'all at this time, you know, if you have anything special that you want put into it, I'll, you know, we'll work it in there. But what ours is, you can see that I take the sixteen budget, what's been requested for the seventeen, you have a column out here that shows you the difference, and then basically what is that difference? Well, the reason that the boards went up, or looked like it might go up a little over three hundred thousand, is because we don't have an in-house attorney anymore. So down on line one thirty was where the board attorney was. That now, that line item has been closed out. And so I brought those expenses, I've incorporated them into y'all's budget. And we, I put some additional in there due to counsel that we're having for these lawsuits, too. And that's just an estimate. Chancery clerk, that's his budget that he turned in. The difference between last year and this is about five thousand two hundred and sixty. That's basically a little bit of insurance and some computer processing fees. Circuit clerk, you can see there's just a very little difference of three hundred and seventy dollars there. The tax assessor is actually going to have a decrease from, we're just gonna follow the line straight on down, this is department one oh three. Basically, he's got a decrease this year of a hundred and eighteen thousand eight eighty-six. He has two employees that retired, won't be coming back, and so he has a reduction there, and he had some other things that reduced that amount, some professional services and all. One thing he is requesting is, the pit assessments that they get, they get thirty-five hundred off of Stone Bridge, and they get thirty-five off of Pine's pit. They want to go to five thousand per, so a total of ten.
Why?
Huh?
Why they wanna go up?
Because they said the work it takes them, they're asking for more, and so we would have to request more from those.
Then you gotta go up on the tax collector, too.
Yes, yes. But what we would do is, we won't give them that amount if we don't get that amount from the pits. So we would have to request an increase from the pit in the assessment fees, but that would come in on the receipt side.
We've never done that before, increased it.
They used to get, they used to get ten each on, and then we took them down to a total of around seventy-five hundred for both of those pits, but they wanna go back up.
The thing is, that then...
So basically, as far as...
That's almost like a bonus.
As far as the budget would be concerned, it would be a wash to us, but they believe that it's necessary for the work in what they do in the pits.
That goes, that goes to the office.
I have several large spreadsheets I have to do.
That goes to the office of...
Goes to John and to Judy.
That's what I wanted to hear you say.
Not to any office.
That's what I wanted to hear you say. And the office one doing all the work.
The same would hold true for the tax collector, tax collector as far as the pit increase. Her other increases would be due to raises, oh, and let me back up a little bit. What I did was, because I have not been given any guidance from y'all, I started at seven hundred and fifty. That is what I have put in, seven hundred and fifty per employee to the nearest step. That was the beginning. I knew we weren't gonna be able to do a lot this year, because I knew we were gonna have some revenue shortages.
Didn't we have, didn't we not do a thousand last year? Some reason I thought...
Yes, we did, and the year before that, we did seven fifty.
Right.
And so I took seven fifty as a jumping off point. So per additional, other than raises, which would be the seventy, seven fifty per person, you know, she has educational allowances now that they have, so if somebody goes to a class, they get another two thousand dollars.
Right.
And if they go to a higher class, they get another four thousand dollars. So she has about four people that are gonna get either two or four thousand dollars additional pay as a result of having attended those classes.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter how many times, how long you're elected, yours is just saying, you don't get any incentive. It's crazy.
Y'all's lobbying must not be very good.
No.
No, because it will be a long time before y'all go up into that next tier of...
I never really understood how they break that anyway, getting off subject, because when I found out, I mean, some of the smaller counties, I mean, like twenty thousand people, thirty thousand people, basically the same thing we get.
I don't see how they do, because it's based on your assessed value plus oil production.
Well, Kappa County told me they got forty-one thousand.
Well...
It was their pay. They had twenty-eight thousand people.
Their assessment would be lower, it's based on assessed value, their assessment would be lower, but if they have some, if they have like their severance, their oil production and all is higher, you could bump them up.
Yeah, well, that's, 'cause I was asking him down there, we were talking, I said something about population, I mean, in your districts, and he said, "Well, let's see."
But it's not based on population.
No, no, I was, I was, well, I was comparing, thinking about that, he said, "Uh, see, about twenty-eight thousand divided by five, that's, that's how many we got in each district." I thought, "Really, that's what I got in my district."
What does the oil have to do with it? What is...
That's just the way they calculate it. I don't know what it has to do...
We have a tremendous amount of CO2, you know, in Rankin County, but I guess that doesn't calculate into it.
It's always been the formula that...
Anyway, I didn't mean to get us off, I just think it's, you know, they could have continued education, and it, statute says they can get another two thousand dollars, and they can get this.
Well, you know, for a long time, the tax collector had no additional education. It was the tax assessor's department was the only one that had educational levels that their people could get more. Then I guess after lobbying long enough, the collector got some educational provisions put in theirs. The next department, one twenty, is the county administrator's department, that's mine. The increase of sixty-seven is due to the seven hundred and fifty dollar raise, plus a new position for a human resource director.
Are you budgeting for that, fifty?
About forty-something. And I, I don't know whether that's even high enough, but I...
The city, the city just hired one like last year, and they advertised, and they had enough, had to pay fifty, and thirty days later, they lost her to somebody willing to pay her seventy-five. So you just, you know, if you're gonna find somebody out there that's gonna be able to do the job as opposed to just a payroll clerk, you know...
We've done the same thing on the state level, two or three times. You hire somebody in around fifty thousand, and then once you get them allocated to it, they're a good hire, working the way you want, somebody's gonna buy you, buy you out.
A company, an outside...
Tell you what I found, when we were with technicians and stuff like that, the older fat ladies.
I resemble them, Mark.
You're not fat. You resemble, you're not fat at all.
He just, you, did you hear what he said? He said you weren't fat, he said you weren't fat, but apparently you're old.
You're not old. I didn't mean it that way.
I was gonna watch Steve navigate through this one right here.
Steve, I got it.
I got it. Well, what I mean is they're more settled. You know, they sit down, they don't wanna get up, they're good. They wanna stay right there.
You are.
Jay shouldn't have said that.
Always like it when a camera rolls.
Golly.
Can I use that Mr. Attorney in a court of law?
Oh, man.
Wow.
That was too funny.
I know, it was his lunch, I know. Go get you a cup of coffee.
I retract all of that. Forgot.
Go ahead, issue your formal apology now. To all your constituents.
Anybody out there that's overweight, including myself, I apologize.
Oh, wait, if you're gonna apologize, go with the older, apologize on the older section, too.
I meant older as in more mature.
All right, the next line item is purchasing, our next department is purchasing. She had very little in there, the raises, and needs a few additional fire cabinets. I've told you about the board attorney, we just wiped him off, so took him out.
I'll try, but I just find myself getting right back in bed with it.
Superintendent of Education, you'll notice that it's an increase. Last year, we had said, "We are cutting out all but frontiers." So I left enough frontiers in there, willing, didn't work out, and we had them all year long. So with the twenty thousand, apparently that I understand they are gonna be happy with, and because frontiers is still up in the air, I talked to the school the other day, and they said that they are not, they are not for profit, they buy them in the school's umbrella. I don't know if we're gonna be able to...
We haven't seen any proof of that at all.
No, we have not, I'm just telling you what I, what I heard, so for right now, I've left them, too. Maintenance of buildings and grounds, that's a little bit of reduction. We had some services that were a little bit high per year, the amount that we had in that line item that we...
That's Johnny Jones's group, you know, coming maintenance, air conditionings.
Yes, sir.
All that kinda stuff.
Yes, sir. And we just had some line items that had been high for a few years that we were able to reduce in that, and he still does have one position open for a maintenance employee that we have not filled yet. One fifty-two, data processing as IT. He has, we do have already our new web employee, that's part-time, we have her on there. She was not in last year's budget, so the half-time had to be added to this. He has also requested one new full-time employee, and has requested several significant raises for his staff beyond the seven fifty. So that will be something we will address in executive session. Veteran service officer, that's the same, there's no increase there. Next page, community development, Renee's department. A slight increase just due to some raises. We did put a little bit in there for architect fees, you know, for what we talked about, review of some of the larger things that need to be. She has one employee that left, and she still has that slot open. We reduced it a little because a new would come in at a lesser amount than that girl was making. Chance record, I knew there was gonna be an increase there, we have some increasing in court reporter fees, had a few deductions. Circuit court, court reporter fees, their court administrator, and then some juror fees, so that went up a little bit. County court, Judge McDaniel, there's a statutory raise for court reporter, and then his administrator is fairly new, and she's made where she could go to the next level and would get an increase. Youth court, as Judge Broom, Paul Bowen's group, they're requesting one new full-time position that would be paid by drug court grant funds that they would be getting in, and a new part-time employee. And then they had some miscellaneous reductions. Lunacy, that's just the rising cost of that court every year, it just seems to go up a little bit more. Justice court, the only thing we have in there are the raises. Coroner's department, we knew this was gonna be a little bit of an increase, starting somebody out new. His request is basically, y'all granted him a secretary at half, part-time. She was not in the budget last year, so she's in there, but he would like to increase her to three-quarter time, which would give her all benefits. And then we did, y'all did increase the deputy pay, and he has an additional deputy also that y'all granted him, so that's all in that increase. District attorney, his budget is down a little bit. They took out some capital outlay, and they're paying for a little bit more of their fuel, so there's a fuel reduction cost. However, that really didn't cost us anyway, they paid it back. They just used our fuel man system, and the receipt came in on the other side, so that really wasn't an expense to us. County attorney department. House Bill four eighty-four, which ended, is not in play for our other judges this year. Would allow him an additional raise, but it's strictly y'all's call, because he's one year behind the judges in what he can be paid. He can be paid ninety-five percent of what they get. As their levels went up over the last few years, he's a, he's a year behind, so he would still be entitled to another raise at board discretion. But I did put it in there, and he's requesting an additional amount for his secretary, which he said is more of an administrator, and he's requesting additional amount for her.
He requests that one every year.
Yes, sir.
Every year for her.
And I do believe that some consideration was given last year, and it was a little bit given in addition.
We gave a small amount, he asked for, yeah.
Quick question here, we're going to executive session to discuss this more detail.
Just discuss all of the details.
Did you get more details for each department? You kinda work through and kinda see what numbers and...
Yes, sir, I'm giving y'all basically a broad overview today, so y'all would just sort of understand the process that we go through. Public defender, I got wind of the fact that an additional one was going to be requested, so I have added that in. So at the level that they're making, one additional fringes.
Let me point out at this stage that that would be a position that would probably end up being shared between circuit court work and justice court work. This has to do with changes that are being mandated primarily through federal lawsuits, where even misdemeanor defendants, where there's a potential for jail time, are being afforded the right to counsel even in the justice court state. And some counties have gotten hot from federal lawsuits recently, so Richard sort of brought this up with Michael and the sheriff both addressing the same issue. So the thought process is, instead of having to give both of them a public defender, maybe try to work it out so that they can share one and let them cover both.
The next department, elections, and I know y'all covered saying, "How could that even go down?", but you know, we have the high maintenance on our voting machines, we know we won't have those in the coming year, they have agreed to bill us for one quarter through December, and that's it. So we were able to take out a little bit there. Sheriff's administration would be an increase here, he's requesting four new hires, and then we have some adjustments in there in the raises for the already employees, regular employees. The jail operations is an increase, part of that is due to prime logic, the maintenance that we have for the jail and the JDC. Part of it was taken from jail, part of it from the JDC budget, they wanted all moved up into the jail, so it came out of one and went up into the other. You can see right below it, JDC, the juvenile justice, it went down forty-seven because we took part of it, was that prime logic maintenance agreement that they got moved up into the jail side. EMS, this is basically a new department, just like you see last year, there was no money in there. This is the one that is making up for the loss of the EMS OF funds that we will be giving, given to Pafford, so Bob has done a little budget for that one. Ambulance service, that is the amount that we have to pay per capita to the ambulance provider in our county. The EMS OF grant, this is the amount, the reason it's reduced is we're gonna get less from the state this year, and that's the amount that will go to Pafford. Now, we cannot just grant that money to them, we still have to go through acquiring what they need, and it will be on our inventory, and we will do hand receipts to give to them so they can have the equipment. Excuse me. EOC, you can see quite a large increase there. That is basically for the request for a new dispatch center that would be co-located. We're gonna wait Monday, I have, for when our meeting over, I have Bob scheduled to come in to talk about EOC budget, EMS budget, nine-one-one budget, Brett coming in to talk about the volunteer fire budget, and I will then, I will request anybody else that should like to come in Monday. If you would, if there's anybody else you want, wanna see, if not, I'll just try to choose some more people. It's not necessary that each department head come before you, if they want to, we give them the opportunity. If you don't have a need because their budget is not increasing or it's decreasing, unless they wanna see you, we just don't make sure that every single person comes in. National Guard, we haven't had a request from them in the last two years. Constables.
One today.
Theirs is going up some, because in the last year's budget, we only had two constables in payroll and two were in claims, they're all through payroll now. But what we do is, when that money comes in from justice court into the constable fund, I'll do a general entry and move it in, so it becomes part of our receipt, too, on the other side, as well as an expense on this side. Not all of it, though, because we only take their gross wages out, we do match now, so that's all on the county. Gay warden, we had a robotic deer they had requested that hung out there for two years, they finally had to cancel it because they couldn't ever get the...
Taxiderm?
Taxidermas to fulfill that, so they canceled that out, and now in its place, he is requesting some night vision, but not killer type or whatever those night vision is, yeah. Vector control, you know, we've been, this is our second year under contract, we had left some additional monies in there year before, I'm taking everything out because we need it other than what our contract is, because that's all that's in that form. Mema bonus grant, that's actually in cash, it's been out there for several years, I had asked Bob and them to try to clean it up this year and use all that money, so I don't have to keep bringing this forward every year until that money's gone, because it has requirements on what can be, it can be spent on. The FEMA safe room, which the sheriff is over that, is going down a little bit, the personnel, the same people are there, but the one that was in there made more, he's coming out of the sheriff's department, so the one that's over there now, he makes a little bit less, so therefore, there's a slight decrease in that. County surveyor, we had put in last year for the insurance, that was not provided, so therefore, there is no cost this year. Public health, the reason that was highlighted, I did not have a request from them, I opened my mail at lunch, I did get one in, they are not requesting any additional funds this year. So that should stay as it is. Region eight, requesting the same amount. Triad, that's a state grant that we have, it's for seniors, our grant has been five thousand, it's going down to fourteen hundred, so that's a state cut. Welfare administration, that's a small decrease, because last year, we were paying, what was in our budget is when they were out at the old JDC, that is now being, MDOC is now in there, and they have the utilities and the garbage pickup, so I was able to reduce that some. Counsel on aging, same request. Human resource agency is a little bit increased, they are asking for an increased amount in their allocation of a little over ten thousand. Donations, patriotic and charitable, we had no request last year, we had nothing in there we paid for, we do have a request from the American Red Cross this year for twenty thousand, that is totally in y'all's discretion. The libraries, the library as far as their, the money that we give them to operate is in their separate village, but this is where they occupy their headquarters up here, we bill them for a part, we pay the utilities and then bill them for a portion, because Johnny's office is in the basement, so those are sort of shared utilities. So we, that's what that little budget's for there. Recreation grant, that's where y'all are allowed to each have five thousand dollars to give to a recreation softball or something that benefits the youth. Soil conservation is highlighted, I have not received a request as of yet for this year. County extension, they have a small reduction, just some allocation. Multipurpose, I reduced that a little, the fencing, we had had sixty thousand in there last year, I don't know that we're gonna have any more, but I reduced it down to, I think we're to pay, aren't we to give the city some of the funding?
Place, Paul.
We agreed to thirty, thirty-five? Something like that? So I was able to reduce it a little bit, because we won't have that full sixty in there. CMPDD, same as requesting as last year, advertising county resources, I had the same. Capital projects, I put the same in.
What is that?
Yep.
Capital projects is the money that we have set aside to do just that, a capital project. We used some of the money last year for the renovation of the circuit court building to accommodate the new judge. We are also paying the architect fees out of there for the new chancery building, because they will become part of that capital expense. We have exceeded, you can see, well, I don't have it on this one, I'm sorry, but we have exceeded that five oh nine.
I bet.
Quite helpful. Debt service is a new one I have for the, an annual payment on the voting machines that would be based on an initial cost of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. I used about a two-point-four-four percent. I have some other information that I'd like to give y'all at a later time. And then inter-fund transfer is, I left that at five hundred thousand. That is where we paid part of our Blue Cross overage, but this year, we had five hundred in there, and today, we've spent well over a million. So you can see that we've already dipped into cash five hundred thousand above what was put in there last year. So if you look down at that second column, the grand total of the request is thirty-nine million, six eighty-seven, seven twenty-three. Our anticipated revenue is thirty-six million, one-one-five, five hundred and eighty-eight, leading us with a deficit of three million, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and, I can't even talk, three million, five hundred and seventy-two, one thirty-five, that we've got to do something with.
Buy to EOC's multi...
I did that.
I've already got a line through it.
Bye, Bob.
I have, I have an additional...
I've got it, I've got three million taken care of, thank you.
Well, I have an, I have an additional paper that I have done, where I have gone back through and basically about put us in to balance.
Yep. I have a silly question to ask, road department employee, is that on the board supervisors?
No, sir. They're in what we call the miscellaneous, well, excuse me, the road manager, of course, is under y'all's purview, and...
His department comes out of a totally different fund, this is all the departments within just general county.
General county, okay.
So I have one that I will give you Monday, that is all our miscellaneous, which is road, bridge, our bond, volunteer fire, all the fire departments, our health insurance and all of that. This is just my first run at getting us back in line, so y'all can look at the last page and just see how much closer it is by...
What do you, what, what do you do each year for the health insurance contract far as, I had gotten a little comments made back to me that we try to reach out to the other departments, but we've kind of, I don't know, not given them proper, proper opportunities to voice their opinion in how we craft our insurance contract? I mean, I don't know if that's accurate or not, I have no idea, as far as having feedback or, 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 you know, input into, say... As far as having feedback or, 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 you know, input into say, okay, we're gonna, this year we're gonna raise the, the deductible and we're gonna, next year we're gonna increase copays and stuff like that. I mean.
No, sir. Typically, we don't reach out to the employees because just like.
Well, not the employees, but department heads, like, you know, the respective department heads for each.
We used to have what we called an insurance committee that was made up of mostly the elected official department heads and such. Then for a few years, we had basically, it was outsourced, like Paul Meggins and Guy Warren with Risk Management do our other insurances. Under their umbrella, they hired, um, we contracted with a man that basically went, helped do that. Then that got expensive, so we just took it back in-house. And I don't think since that, the gentleman, I can't even remember his name, he, anyway, since he was helping us, we haven't had any changes since that time.
Was that Mickey?
No, Mickey's our agent. I can't, I can't remember the gentleman's name. But anyway, we could, if we intend on doing anything this year, we could go back out to the department heads and get their feeling on it. We just operate under such a short window to try to get everybody together and.
I don't know what they'd be talking about because the things that we've done, basically, were just.
I don't think it's.
Percentage that we had in, had to increase that our, ours went up.
I didn't, I didn't hear anything, any complaints per se. It was just that they didn't have any input into it. And I don't think there was, there was no disgruntled, I didn't hear disgruntled comments saying, well, the insurance premium went up or the copays went up.
What input they were talking about.
You know. We can, we can go back to the, what we call basically the Insurance Board and bring them together. We have tried to do it in such little increments as to not, I mean, we didn't jump from a two fifty to a thousand dollar deductible. We did it in such small stages as to not affect the.
Well, I never really heard any complaints about the, the contract itself. It was just not having the input that the board, essentially, the board was making all the decisions on what they wanna do. They didn't have any input. That was kind of essentially.
I know, but that's what I'm trying to figure out. What would have been, what input would there been to put in there?
I don't know. Man, I just, I'm just voicing what I heard, you know, when I went, when I ran.
The one thing, the one thing that we had done before and talked about before, you know, you got, uh, two fee-based, Chancery and Circuit Clerk, is, uh, we, we looked at before, is them paying their own insurance. It's their fee-based.
Right.
And, uh, one year, um, Becky did hers and.
Larry did his.
Larry did his, but then one year Becky did hers and Larry didn't do his, and we had to come back in and pay his. But he just didn't do it. So then we had to come back then and be fair and. Yeah, it's about that.
Actually, I was just, you answered my question, I mean, but I, you know.
We, we did have an insurance committee and we could go back to that again. It basically was, um, most of the elected officials, department heads, myself, and that was about it. So there ended up being, um, you know, M6 or whatever in the, um, meeting.
You said go to the back page?
Yeah, if you go to the back page and, hello, you can see that in the, um, you can see the second column where it's basically just like the one I gave you. Then I went in and made adjustments and came down to actually where we are to the good by about sixty-six thousand. Now, that could be eaten up pretty quick.
You don't want you have the first.
I mean, so, yeah, so, you know, we'll, I don't know what they'll ask for. And I'm not saying that there's not any kind of errors. I've gone back through it several times, but that can always be, so.
I call it the wish list.
But basically, I went back in, I moved everybody back to the seven hundred and fifty rounded to the nearest step.
No, no way to consider.
There might have been a few things I left in there, such as in U Court, I probably left their additional person they were requesting because it was gonna be done by a grant, not by costing the county any necessary, any funds, um.
I'm curious though, Sullivan's office, he's, he's got two retirees. Is he not gonna plan to fill those positions?
Well, one of them was retiring, already coming back, that he is not, he's not going, he's already retiring.
Okay.
He's not coming back. And then the, um, Joanne that just retired.
Right.
So he says he can do it on what he has, moving those people around.
I tell him he need to hire, he need to buy one of those, uh, drones, start using drones to do your inspections on your, you know, especially backyards and your buildings like that. So they, the next time you, one, one of your people retires, put in there for a drone and get, you know.
The problem now is all the rules they got.
Round the airport, yeah.
That's the problem.
Pollen.
But, and, yeah, I mean, depending on what you use it for, you've gotta have.
I was gonna say, you fly one of those up on my neighbors, you won't get it back.
Really? You got a good skeet sheet and tape. Um, Bob, sorry, go ahead. I didn't, I'm digressing.
Anyway, this, this is just a very broad overview, but I'm showing you how that we can, you know, can get it back into line. But there might be some things that y'all wanna look at in here, some.
Just, just to kind of make sure, I'm, I'm just gonna repeat this out loud, so I'm on the same page. This, what this is today is, is that set village we have just for general accounting or general fund, general fund.
Yes.
And then the other villages that we've got allocated, the road, bridge, uh, that's coming, fire department and stuff, that's all coming Monday.
Those are all separate. These are all housed under the General County umbrella.
Gotcha.
All of these departments are.
Oh, that's how they all set.
So they share, they share that village there, that one.
We did that a few years ago.
So this is just a fifth-foot overview, so y'all would see about how, how it, um, looks. Y'all have anything that you want to instruct me, that you'd like to see in here? Anything else that you would be thinking about in the way it raises opposite of what I have put in?
I don't think there's much room for anything.
Well, there's not, and that's why I started there. Even though our ADLORM increased, not quite two percent, just about like it has been, we took a hit on some other things, such as the, um, correction, um, the jail inmate bone.
Yeah.
Also on our severance taxes are way down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just had several things that we took a hit on. So, but you can see I put out there, our ADLORM increase at the very bottom over to the far right looks like about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
You know, when they had the hailstorm, all bad weather. Man, our tags shot off the moon. Everybody about getting those two vehicles. Remember when the hailstorm, we know where the revenue all just shot up the tax collectors? It's all the tags. Shoot, get rid of that car, get in another one.
We had a little good, fairly good increase in our revenue too, from all our insurance claims for buildings and everything that we had a lot of vehicle damage too.
Yeah. You never realize what disaster fits where.
Any questions, um, that y'all have about individual departments or.
But, you know, nah, I'm okay. Never mind.
Human Resource.
Agency, yes, sir.
What all do they, what do we get for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I know that they have some programs. I think several of those programs have been, um, taken over. And some of them have by CMPDD. They have, used to have, and I don't know that they still do the Mills on Wheels. They have what they call the Lykeef program, which.
They don't have the Mills on Wheels now, does it?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
They do the transportation for.
Yeah, they do the transportation, but they don't do, I don't think they have Mills and Wheels. That one was taken over, I think, by CMPDD. The, what was supposed to happen years ago when this department was given money on the ground floor when they came to Rankin County Board and said, you know, we'd like to be funded. It was the intent that we were gonna fund, and, and the reason I say this, I wasn't here at the time, but it was also done in other counties. Going to fund for a while, get them off the ground, and then they were supposed to get grants in order to keep it rolling.
Yep.
Well, the grants aren't coming, so every year, we're taking it again. I'm not saying they don't get any grants. They're just not funding themselves.
Has, has it been a year that they've asked for less money than the year before?
No, sir.
No, that's coming down from the different grants that they have asked for in the past, like the low energy and different things of that nature to keep their clients to have more and do. Some of those, some of those have gone away and they've reapplied different ways because they've called, got our guns and stuff and stuff. So they, they tried.
That's what I'm saying. They, they try to get grants, but they, they just don't.
It's not their fault.
Next Wednesday, following us, yeah. Two weeks, two weeks from yesterday.
It's not our fault either.
Next Wednesday?
I thought, I don't think so.
Uh, I mean, if they're cutting out some of the programs, like the Mills on Wheels and some of the other, we're not seeing a reduction in.
State over costs.
Yeah.
Where, where else do they get their money besides, besides grants? Anybody else give them money besides us?
Yes, they do. They get, um, they get money from other sources, um.
Wait, I'm sure they gotta provide a financial statement, do they not, to us?
They do. They do. They receive funding from cities. I don't know, it doesn't list what all cities, uh, so I don't know what all entities do, but they get twelve thousand, six hundred collectively from whatever cities they get it from. They get four thousand, two hundred from churches. They get five thousand from rent. They get donations of around five thousand, four hundred, about two thousand dollars in interest. And then the remainder of six thousand, four hundred, six, six hundred and forty-two thousand comes from Rankin County.
Would it be, would it be prudent maybe for the director to kind of lay out a better profile for us, what, what they do do with the money? I mean, I think, uh, Steve's got a good point. I mean, just, I mean, I, I hear a lot about it. I hear, I hear a lot about it. I just know I pointed somebody back to the board. I guess that's all I know about it.
Steve, can you make them a copy of each of this, please? That tells, lays out salaries, bridges and a lot about what they do.
Maybe time for a checkup.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't hurt just to kind of, you know, just to kind of make sure that we're all, you know, on the same page. Just, we had new boards, you know, uh.
What about American Red Cross? I mean, I know what they are and what they do, and they've got about eighty-eight percent administrative cost to their business. When, I mean, I see you knock ten thousand off, and I had more, twenty off, but I'm listening to you.
No, sir. I'm not doing, I wasn't doing that for me. I was just trying to find every place I could cut a little bit to get the bunch back in balance. If y'all.
I agree.
Totally have, that's fine.
What, what do I, I mean, how do we get into doing this? Cause there's a lot of things that would like for us to give them money.
Well, we can only give to certain charities and organizations. We're limited on what we can give to. And they are ones that you can fund, um.
Thank you, ma'am. So, section of a statute that lays out about fifteen or twenty organizations. Most of them are not named directly.
Yep.
Most of them just say organizations that do such and such for such and such, all within the type of. The American Red Cross actually has one that says donations to the American Red Cross, and it's based on the assessed value of the county. The, the max amount that you can donate is tied to the assessment of property in the county. So, for instance, uh, two percent of the assessed value, I don't remember what it was based.
Yeah, I don't remember. You sent that to me in an, in an email.
So they have a specific subcategory within a statute that authorizes donations from the board of supervisors.
Yep.
They're lumped in there with Mississippi Burn Foundation and Salvation Army and others. So you're authorized to.
Right. My feeling is the people that pay their taxes in Rankin County are better adapted to give their money for donations to who they want to than for us to collect it through taxes and then us do it as a board. Uh, I don't think that, I think for the most part, they don't need us administering their money. Uh, they need us to fix their road and they can make their donations if, you know. And, and in most cases, they would make, when you give it back to the people, they would make a higher donation than when you're taking it and making it for them.
I would prefer with that rationale.
Maybe just come forward in a request, so like instead of always put the request in there and then in an effort to balance, but that's certainly not many of our resident, I'm just was trying to find.
Well, you were going in my direction. I'm, I'm with you.
Well, I feel like if I just totally wiped them off, y'all might have thought I was a very stingy person.
No, ma'am, I wouldn't.
I'm, uh, I'm kind of with you. Uh, that would be one of the ones if we're gonna start looking at something that we, that'd be it.
Well, we've got them on here. I mean, there'd be another ten that could be on here just as easy.
Let the camera don't come back here.
That's not pretty good. I can.
It could have been.
Uh, I've made my assessment of this, and I'm pretty, very, I'm very close to what you have, Laura.
And then, you know, I, I might have to bump it up a little bit more if y'all are gonna allow me to even see if I can find a human resource.
I, I strongly encourage you to do that. I, I really do. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'll go ahead and force my support that you need that help.
Yeah, then there's that sixty-six thousand, uh, that left over. That's part it, just went out.
Yeah.
I just really think that with four hundred and fifty-plus employees, the benefits that we provide to them and the questions that they are constantly calling, asking, that we need to have somebody that is the definite go-to person for them, that they can, that they can feel comfortable sitting in their office and them helping them with some things that, you know, that they, they might need help on. Right now, we're processing payroll and it's processed basically four, three times a month, two by weeklies and a monthly payroll. And all the reports that we have to file, and now with everything online, Obamacare, what we have to pay and what we have to file on that. I just really think it's time.
We can always cut the money out of the county administrator, you know, salary too, and kind of pull back.
That is true. That is very true. That is very true.
If we're easing your workload, we could do that.
I, I agree. And me working half-time, that would work out great.
Or you could, you know, let it run downhill. You don't, you don't, you don't have to take the whole.
Mine's already stopped up downhill.
You know, I'll tell you what, if it's gonna start draining that direction, I'm afraid we're going to have to get in a.
All right, Ms. Oster, what is, what is our time?
Very much larger part.
What is, what is your timeline for this process all the way to October one? What is your, your?
Um.
You talking about?
I have to, by August the twenty-second, I have to have all my papers, uh, everything in order to give to the paper that day because we have to publish for two weeks prior to having our hearing on the first month, Tuesday of September, so Monday's a holiday. So I think if we have some departments come in on Monday afternoon, then if we can set another time between then and the fifteenth for them to come in, then.
Who do you, who do you, I didn't see anybody in this particular group that I wanted to see, you know, everything looked reasonable. And I trust the sheriff. He was elected, so I figured he knows what he's doing, you know, what he wants to. I'm assuming the four new hires he's gotta have. I mean, I, I'm not gonna challenge, I don't think.
Well, basically, the way the law is written to the sheriff adopts, well, presents his budget as he wants it. And the only levy y'all have is if their flat was not enough money, you could say, can you give us some help here? But if there is sufficient money, it's basically, he sets his, it's his call.
If you looked at his, it showed breakdown, how many cars he wanted, the plan on replacing and stuff like that. If you look at breakdown, he's usually, you know, that's one you just about have to go along with because it's.
Kind of like the school board, huh?
Well, it's vital Rankin County. I mean.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess where I was headed with this discussion far by is bringing department heads in. Uh, I mean, you got Bob and them coming on Monday, which is fine. Uh, only one, I can't really think, are you correct with Ron? You've been through a notice. Those will be Mike and, and the road department, because I know he's gonna make some capital expenditure requests, and I'm very curious to see, get his take on what he wants to do, so.
If he, if he ready, he may need a little more time. I don't know.
He might want to, um, have Rusty, uh.
Yeah, I do, yeah, yeah.
See.
Would like to see, yeah, you're right about that, yeah.
Um, let me look real quick and see if there's anybody else that I would know. Um, I usually extend the invitation to anybody if they want to see y'all for anything. If not, most of them say, hey, they don't wanna see.
Well, just tell them nobody will be here to hear what they have to say, but they're welcome to come.
They're welcome to come, okay? And I, I did, I even did clue Rusty in for the second. And I, I did, I even did clue Rusty in for the second, because he should be around, I told him.
Really? Well, I think Jess got the idea, we'll just, we'll let it record, and then, you know, we can put it on YouTube, and if we decide we wanna hear it, then.
Like they, like they did y'all, we'll eventually get around to reviewing it.
Yeah.
I think then some of the other stuff that we'll get a little bit more in depth in, then I'll have to talk to you, a lot of that will be in executive sanctioning because it will be about specific salaries. So, I think other than that.
Well, I think you can get your salary for this human resource person or whatever, right out of Rankin County Human Resource Agency. I mean, if you look down through here, they've got eighty thousand dollars budgeted for matching money for grants, and they're not getting any grants, so they don't have eighty.
They are getting, I feel sure. They do get some grants.
They do get some.
From my understanding, y'all saying they weren't getting any grants anymore?
No, sir, they're not.
They're being cut lower on their grants as far as the number they have, but they still do have some.
Well, as the amount of grants go down, if they're matching, then the amount of matching money would go down.
But they still do get some.
And I feel sure a lot of that might be projection for a match on a grant that they hope to get, that they're applying for and hoping to get that grant and would need that.
I mean, that was just one little, there's fringes, a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yes, sir, that would be all the.
But, uh.
I noticed down here too, it says audit, twelve grand. So, that's a pretty, that's a pretty, pretty strong number to pay. They, they got a good financial statement out there somewhere, we may wanna get a couple copies, baby, or get them to email us a copy.
Don't we, Janice, don't we get that every year? Will we get their audit yet? We put that out there on, um, minutes.
I think so, I think you look.
I mean, it's my understanding that if you want to get on their program to be picked up and taken to
Dialysis, doctor.
Or, or even a basic, I mean, even a, just a daycare kind of thing, home, and so, we pick up some people and take them to a daycare type deal over in Rid, Ridgeland, but you're shaking your head like you
No.
You don't think it's a case hurt?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just listening, I'm trying.
Okay, uh, well, anyhow, wherever we take them, but I was told it was in Ridgeland, but there's very few, and if you wanted, you have to put your name in a hat and it goes in a hopper, and you may be chosen the next year or the next year, but only a very few. I guess cause they can't pick up everybody, but still, if we're down to picking up a few and some, there might be, if we got cuts, then we've got to pass cuts along, and where we're spending money that benefits a very few people versus a program that benefits a lot of people, I would rather stick with the programs that were getting the most bang for our buck instead of, I mean, I, I, the reason I'm saying this, I saw a bus that had that on it, and it was going by me, and we're way out in the county, and I checked to see who it was, what was going on, I mean, I just called Jay, and there was three people on the bus that could carry at least twenty. And, uh, he told me, you know, what he knew about it, and I thought, wow, now that is not very efficient.
Well, I'd be glad to, um, schedule the time for Mark Dierman to come in here to speak to y'all.
That bus goes all over picking up, and they may have already dropped some off when you saw those. They carry them to the appointments, and they come back and pick them up, and cause in the past, Mark had said, we do this, this, and this. I've talked to him several times.
Well, they may be the best thing out there and the most efficient, but I would like to.
Yeah, let.
I mean, if we got nearly three-quarters of a million dollars of our budget going that way, I, I think it'd be prudent to look at it.
Okay, so y'all know who we have coming Monday? Anybody else?
Who, go ahead, Mr. Slay, make a guess on our timing for Monday's meeting, so we can figure out how much time we're gonna have for the.
How much of a lunch to pack?
Yeah.
A meeting won't be too long, so.
Jay will be back.
Based on what Jared just said, I would predict we'll get out of here by four. Cause he just jinxed it.
I don't know how he can look at it and tell me it shouldn't be long. I've yet to figure out how to.
That's wishful thinking. In fact, if y'all ever notice, the shorter the
Yeah, the longer, yeah.
Longer it takes to get through it, so maybe we should pack this.
Well, you can, I can see, I can see these are gonna be approved. These, this is simple. They're gonna approve John and them right quick. You know, discussion things, we've already discussed some of them.
I probably, and this will only be on the consent.
Public hearings are real fast, we've already pretty much gone through them.
Budget amendment for the sheriff's department, but it will not be an increase in funds. It's only moving some money around for them. They need some things that their line items are gone, so it would just be moving money.
We probably, my hope would be that y'all could talk to at least one of the folks y'all need to talk to before lunch.
I, I guess what I was headed with is maybe see if Rusty's available for me to.
I have him on standby, Rusty already, I told him.
I'm gonna tell you, so far what I've seen here, this is one of the easier ones. We're looking at the different departments here that have gone, uh, a little increase or no increase or deduction.
Yeah.
We don't have to see that. So, that, this is one of the simpler ones so far.
Judges start coming here.
When, when you look at this, Laura, and expecting the note on the new courthouse, which we won't have, I know, for a year or two or three, but how are we gonna jump over that hurdle when that comes, if we're trying to make ends meet right now without it?
Well, it won't come from this, it won't come from the general county. We have our four-point-oh-eight in the bond. We had talked about taking a half a mill for bridge.
I got you.
We will talk about that some more in the couple of weeks to come.
We don't, but, we don't want them to take money out of that asphalt fund, I mean, uh.
No, sir, not road, we're not talking about road, we were talking about.
I know, I know, I know, but I'm, I'm just getting ahead of this because, uh.
Well, I think that will be decided.
We, we will be, but I sure don't wanna say, let's go in there, just because somebody didn't use it one year, whatever, cause we've got plenty roads that need it.
I didn't get, no.
You don't think so?
You need to quit, no, I think you need to leave it alone.
That's what I'm saying, is leave it alone.
Keep robbing, you won't put back.
We've.
Yeah, you're right.
We've got.
We've robbed it before, once before, and we didn't put, we put, I think, back a half mill, took a.
We took one out yesterday and put back a half.
Yeah, it's like I say, you're just not gonna put it back.
I just, I think, leave it there and if, once we get everything lined up, these guys will work and we'll use.
The one that's gonna be pushing to get that is the one that doesn't have a city street.
Exactly. That's exa, that's why I wanna vote on it right now.
No, no, they ain't.
There's three around here today, let's do it.
I, I, it doesn't matter where you take it from. But short of raising mills, you have to take it from somewhere. We have very few funds that have the availability to even take from it.
Right.
We, we don't have very many funds. We have, um, of our funds that we have, we have our general county. So, we have our general county budget. We can't touch any of the fire, uh, budgets, those are all separate, they're like, basically, we have our road, our bridge, our general county. Yeah, but I mean, to give to the bond, I mean.
Right, right.
We, we just don't have a lot of places. It's either take it from somewhere, even if it means shaving something off the general county as well, to give to the bond, or it's raising.
But we can shave some there, I mean, everybody can have pay for it.
Um, right now, what, what, what's your thoughts?
Well, in the past, we had talked about the past couple of years when, when, or year or two, when we knew this was coming up, we had all said the best place to take it from probably would be the half a mill off a bridge that we had given back to bridge, only because our bridges are in good order and we have a good cash balance.
Yeah.
Whereas you can see, it was a struggle for me to get, to get, you know, general county back into a halfway balancing act here. Now.
Don't take it out of road.
So.
You are, you say?
Don't take it out of road.
We're not talking about road.
No, I say, we don't take it out of there.
Yeah, no, we weren't talking about road, we were talking about bridge. We, we don't have anywhere else to take it from.
Bridge is it, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, but don't.
Yes, sir, it's either that or, or we raise. Now, if, if it's.
Can't raise.
That puts you down.
Well, I understand, but you know, you know, if you could raise a half mill, look, if you raised a half mill, people would throw a fit. If you lowered half mill, nobody ever says a word.
Right.
Oh, yes, that is the truth.
Yeah.
But you say, the word raise.
Yeah. I don't know.
We were just talking about, what you're saying, you could raise a half mill.
And you know, the same thing.
You could lower half a mill, don't say a word.
It is.
Let's don't discuss that, that red light somewhere like there.
I mean, but the truth of the matter, I'd say the average person, house that's sitting on a lot in a subdivision in my district is probably more that's like that than rural area, but even rural area, I, I bet the average person doesn't pay more than two-fifty, two-hundred-seventy-five dollars a year in what comes to us, county. Uh.
A bit more than that, I bet.
I think it would be more than that.
Okay, say three hundred. I don't know, but I mean, I was thinking probably two-fifty to three hundred.
Boy, what happened to that coffee?
I made it. The, uh, you know, that same family, they don't look at, uh, how much school. They're paying way more of that to the school, and the school gets it from the state, the Fed, and us, and then they write a check for their internet and cell phone, and it's more than that a month.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Uh, and that cell phone or internet, if somebody's breaking in your house, it's not gonna save you, but sheriff or the ambulance or the fire or, you know, the things that.
Generally speaking, about fifty-five cents of every Avalorum dollar is headed to the school district.
It's a little more than that.
Fifty-seven cents.
No, yeah, it's a little more.
About fifty-seven cents on every dollar.
How much would you put that onto the sheriff department? How much of the?
How much else on top of that, I'd probably say sixty percent of the remainder would be public safety oriented.
Yeah, I know they're our biggest budget.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
When you coalesce a town.
Probably for your education.
The road assets, the other big parts again.
You gotta take one.
You're, you're having to eat out of about twenty cents on the bond.
Which I'm, I'm like, I'm.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just a regular asset. No, I'm not playing, I'm just telling you, we deal with about, we, we operate off of about forty, forty, forty-one percent. Well, if you got to add in, uh, education would be high ones.
Parents in there.
So, that's not in your fifty. If you push it more closer to sixty.
So that, so that.
If you figure high ones in there, and they're right, yeah.
So, that request for us all getting Rubicon Jeeps is kinda out the door, let's go around?
Yes, sir.
Do you know how much those suckers cost?
Fifty to sixty grand they sticker, two a mansion for a Jeep.
I know, that ain't right, great.
We'd have to have a Rubicon dealership in the county to make that.
You know, the sad thing is I, I wanted to buy me a, a new used truck, a new used truck. Now, we don't buy, we don't buy new vehicles at my house, my, my wife has a pretty black car, but it was bought used. I wanted to buy a new used truck, and I went up there with my truck, and they sent me home. Said, nah, man, sell it yourself. I said, really? What were you giving me for it? Forty-five hundred. Said, the air conditioner works a lot of the time, you know, the radio works, I don't know. So, I'm just gonna keep driving.
What else, Ms. Oster?
I think that's it for today.
Mr. Slay, you got something?
Unless y'all have any.
If y'all don't mind, just, uh, just another one of these, I need your help, uh, sending signals and giving direction to folks that are acquiring.
This needs to be, no?
Yes, sir, it's, it absolutely does, uh, because it's already been in front of you one time before. Ms. Nogurus showed up with Mr. Underwood, and this is on our, uh, piece of property that is south of the Chick-fil-A, between Chick-fil-A and the interstate. This is about the, a, a potential TIF project. They've gone to the city of Brandon, and based on what I understand, Brandon is at least open to discussing this as a TIF project, but it, it does not and will not qualify under the county's current TIF policy. We talked about that. Our current TIF policy says we want to see them have at least thirty million dollars in total investment activity, and this one is gonna be a fifteen to twenty million dollar project.
It grew from fifteen to twenty that day.
Well, it. Sprouted weeds.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question about the, you know, I mean, I understand a little bit of the history for the reason for initiating a policy, but, cause I mean, we're just didn't wanna get nickel and dime to death, is that correct, for us, these small projects? Is that what it?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Was what generated the, the policy?
It was.
If we were gonna stick our neck out with Avalorum by the exemption impact, we wanted it to be a substantial project that would bring significant economic activity in the county. That's what was behind the policy.
And we wouldn't be doing this every month.
But we don't grab any, scare any Avalorum or anything off of it.
And they do have a, a paperwork monitoring the impact. It does affect the assessor's office. He has to keep up with those issues. The collector has to
He hates.
Receive those, uh, those, uh, funds and remit. We have to account for the bond. Well, I, I guess we do, we have to account for it to the city, the impact on the city. So, there's a, there's an impact to us, uh, that, uh, that is realized with these tips, and we try to be careful not to give away the store too.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, correctly, Mr. Slay, we were in the same group, but I think the city of Brandon has agreed to give all their Avalorum, no sales tax, and they were looking for something from us, and really, the meeting that we had was, where I kinda invited myself, I knew what was going on, was just to see if we were interested. And, and Mr. Bishop could said, yeah, we'll, we'll talk, and then the ball went back to their court to say, okay, what? And that's what they haven't come back to us with, right?
Well, they have, they have provided some limited information that I can forward to you guys, that is, it's the, it's a, it's a project description that lays out what they're planning, the amount of the retail space they're planning, what the additional parcels, out parcels would be composed of, the fact that it includes a hotel, uh, would be in there. They do lay out the, uh, projected increment. I thought they did a pretty decent job, so I'm gonna forward that to you guys. Really, what they're looking for is, is there any interest at all on part of the board supervisors to consider deviating from your standard policies so we can move forward with further discussion about it?
Thing about it, you just said something. They, uh, Brandon's willing to give up their, for them, but not the sales tax, but all we have is to give up is Avalorum, so we.
I'm gonna give up our sales tax and keep the Avalorum. That'd work.
Yeah, I mean, so.
We talked about, what was discussed, it was a half the Avalorum?
Fifty percent, yes, sir.
Fifty percent, I thought we were cap it, and we were gonna cap it too, I believe.
And a half a million dollar thing.
Yeah, um.
It's.
But if you do this, you might as well throw the three, thirty million dollars out the window and just say we're done with that.
No.
You would be.
Well, you don't have to do that.
You would be triggering the.
Well, I mean, if I'm the next guy to come in, you would.
It's gonna be harder, it's gonna be harder. You gotta figure out a way, understand how you justify the difference.
There's a savings clause in our policy that says if the board supervisors decide that a project has a particular merit, then we can deviate from the policy.
And I think this money, though, they're using for is gonna be ready for infrastructure, all roads, the entrance roads, ready to highway department. Dick, you should be putting up this money, but, uh, but think it's the highway. They're having to widen out, you know, so they can account for the traffic coming in and out, is what the money's going to be used for, believes it not?
Well, uh, remember what they said, they have a, they have a significant wetlands issue.
Yeah, that's right, sure.
And, uh, a lot of their infrastructure costs is gonna be tied up in their mediation responsibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But they are, uh, constructing a fairly significant access road onto this property that ties back into the, to the road that serves Chick-fil-A and then the other McDonald's and the other hotels. So, it would be an extension of that road down to cul-de-sac area, uh, that would have to be constructed, but they're gonna have a lot of dirt, uh, cycle costs, uh, that would be heavily. I, I'm gonna forward this to you guys, y'all be thinking about it, uh, maybe over the weekend, we can revisit the issue Monday, but I, I feel like we need to let Chris and Mr. Underwood know, at, at some point, we need to tell them, guys, you don't need a policy, and we're gonna stick with our policy. Just give them an answer.
And I think the policy was originated, what, back in oh-eight, oh-seven?
Uh, close to it, oh-eight.
And that was, that was the hierarchy of, of, of the, the economic, we were at the pinnacle, you know, and then.
That's right.
Well, it actually was started, yeah.
So, maybe we need to look at maybe.
What started, but I'll tell you later, what triggered that.
But, that's neither here, but we can discuss that Monday.
What is Underwood's first name?
Sir?
All right, I have a motion. We done? Have a motion to, what, recess until Monday, the
adjourned, yeah.
Adjourned, adjourned Monday, what is it, the, what's the date?
First, uh.
Yeah, first, uh, that, that sure is.
Do you wish us to keep these, Ms. Oster, or do we?
I'm gonna keep these.
I have, I have a motion. I have, I have a motion.
So, move.
Okay. Mr. Morrow, second Mr. Gaines, I'll vote aye. I'll vote, okay.
There might be a new revision coming later on, but
I'm just gonna hang on.
Keep those, look over them if you have any questions.